All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 16, 2024 Select Board Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Leo, why don't you go?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I think we already have a couple more people for citizens input, and I've heard a couple more might want to get up and speak. We've got a pretty long agenda, and everybody knows we've got some big business to do later on this evening, so I'm going to limit everybody to three minutes, and if you can finish sooner, that would be great. First on our agenda is Janet. Janet, state your name and where you're from. Go ahead and have a seat right up there if you want.
My name is Jan Sergeant Tracy. I'm at 29 Putnam Road in Foxborough here in town, and I'd like to speak on the vote by mail that is offered into Massachusetts residents, and the only way not to have that for municipal voting is for the board to vote against that. And I'm speaking today to ask the board not to opt out. This was brought up last year on the agenda, and you voted to opt out, and I'd like you to reconsider that vote for this year. You have to vote every year on that. One of the points about why vote by mail wasn't necessary in town was because very few people used it, and this is just for the municipal. The others are state mandated. And so the only time that it was used in municipal voting here in town was in 2020 during the pandemic. And during that cycle, over 45% of votes were cast either absentee or vote by mail. And if you tease out the absentee, a full 22% were cast by vote by mail in that election. And I think that's a pretty substantial number, 22% of people voting in town, and a real success story that it's a successful thing to do. Another point that was made was that to use an absentee ballot instead of a vote by mail. And I gave everyone a little packet in the last page is right off of the Secretary of State's webpage, and it shows very clearly that there are only three reasons why one would qualify to vote absentee: if you have a disability, for religious reasons, or if you're going to be traveling. Some, Bob Cutler has said that he's very liberal in giving those out, which is fabulous. I think it's great, and I want to say, too, that I think the Clerk's Office does just a beautiful job. They've got a lot of integrity, and they're hardworking. But should, but two things, two points on that, and then I'll leave. One of them is when using the absentee ballot, you have to swear under penalty of perjury that one or more of the three criteria that I just named is true. And there are lots of people that can't swear that and would choose to vote by mail. The other one is that if we were, if people did bend the rules a bit and swear to that and get an absentee ballot, if the election was ever close or ballots had to be recounted or that was contested in any way, those ballots would be deemed not qualifiable, so they'd be thrown out. Those votes would not count. So I think for those reasons, it's very important. I've got a whole paper. You can read those, seven or eight points, other reasons why I think voting by mail is important. And so for those reasons, I ask the board not to vote against or not to, to, let's see, I ask the board not to...
Opt out?
Opt out, thank you. Not to opt out and let the ruling stand as it is written in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm on the citizens input, and usually during citizens input, there's go back and forth, but, you know.
Oh, did you have questions?
No, 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 we can't. But what I'm going to say is our town clerk, Bob Cutler, does have a section later on today where we'll be discussing it then.
So you were waiting for someone who was in disagreement with the former speaker?
No.
Because you said back and forth. Okay.
There was no back and forth.
There's no, okay. Hi, I'm Jeannie Dyer, 400 Foxborough Boulevard, apartment 9102, and I will be brief. I can't improve on the eloquence of the former speaker, but I'm here to tell my personal tale, which is that I care for a 93-year-old woman, my mom. She's handicapped, and this means that if I'm to leave, as I did tonight, I must have a home aide at $35 an hour, and the same holds true, obviously, for elections. I'm not the only person who has care issues to deal with. There are people whose work schedules conflict. There are people whose children need care, and so it's a difficulty. And during the pandemic, it was a blessing to be able to have the mail-in vote. Most of the state has retained the right to have mail-in vote during municipal elections. We're in a minority, and I don't want that to continue. I am totally against opting out of the mail-in ballot for local elections. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I can beat those two eloquence.
Very organized.
Well done. Bert Delaney, 18 Fox Hill Road. Two items I'd like to address tonight quickly, due to your time and the weather outside. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank the screening committee that you folks put together for the new town manager position. Having sat on those committees myself here in town and where I work, the amount of time, effort, and volunteerism that goes into that is significant. I especially like to thank Mr. Cutler, Bob Cutler, for overseeing that committee. Secondly, I'd like to publicly express my concerns to the four members of the board who disregarded their own process of selecting a new town manager. Ms. McGowan, you don't have to worry about any of this. Your lack of professionalism and total disregard for a fair interview process is concerning, to say the least. You asked the screening committee to do their job, and they did. They did it professionally. You simply didn't like their candidates and didn't like the process, and you changed the rules of the game in the fourth quarter. I can't believe, as we sit here in Foxborough, six months later at the bolical of the other town manager, that we're doing this again. You predetermined what candidate you wanted to push forward, and you wasted the time of the screening committee. Shame on you. In particular, I was shocked when I heard two quotes from the members of this board. Ms. Gibson, I don't know what you mean by this, but quote, "I don't think there's any harm in interviewing Ms. Duncan at this time. We quickly found out what the harm that existed when two of the qualified candidates withdrew." The harm you also did not see is for future volunteers who are going to be asked to be on these screening committees to say, "Why bother?" That's the harm. We have yet to see the harm, although those two candidates withdrew. We are going to see it. Mr. Keith, quote, "I've never seen a situation where the screening committee chooses not to forward the name of the board's designated choice." Did you have a designated choice prior to the screening committee looking at the candidates? Obviously, you did. The process is skewed. If this statement by you is not indicative that this board has already determined who the new town manager would be, was going to be, I don't know what is. Chairman Alphman, Doc, I've known you a long time. You're an ethical and quality man, person. You, as the leader of this board, have an opportunity to right this ship. I ask you to make a motion and to suspend the appointment of the new town manager until at a time that this board or a newly-elected board can do it the right way. I'm disturbed that this board, again, six months later, has turned this interview process upside down. We are a laughingstock, and there's only 32 of us in this world. We are on a world stage with the stadium sitting up on Route 1. You asked volunteers to do a job, and they did. You didn't like it. You changed the rules of the game. So again, I ask you to immediately suspend the appointment of a new town manager. I would also ask the four members who chose to change the rules of the game in the fourth quarter to resign immediately from your leadership positions. You have shown that you are not capable, for whatever the reasons, to make decisions that are in the best interest of this community. I look forward to seeing you step down and new leadership step forward. As we saw up on Route 1 last week, you could have great leadership for a long time, but change sometimes is necessary. It is necessary in the town of Foxborough. Thank you.
My name is Randall Lyons. I'm 59 Carroll Drive in Foxborough. I've been here 10-plus years. I drafted an email that I sent out on Friday just expressing my overall thoughts on the process. I think you guys acknowledged last week that a mistake was made in terms of not expressing your desire to put forward the acting town manager. Mistakes happen. I respect that. I think you brought it up. You acknowledged it, and you moved forward. I am, I serve as an executive director for a nonprofit trade association here in this, as a statewide trade association. I also sit on several boards. I understand the process. I get what you're under. I don't work for a town, so I don't understand the public side of it, but I certainly acknowledge the effort that goes into this. My point in my letter was to look at Paige's experience for the last seven or eight months and talk to the town leaders that she represents, the town boards, to get their way in, to see if they have her support, to see if they have, if she has earned their respect. If Paige has earned their respect, if Paige has earned their support, then absolutely she should be the candidate. She is now has the seven to eight months on the job experience to do the job. Yes, she may not have the exact qualifications needed, or excuse me, not needed, but the exact qualifications to match the other two candidates, but you can't put a price tag on the seven to eight months that she's already been on the job. She has now put forward a budget that is in process. I don't know if it's exactly completed, but as mentioned in the last meeting, it is going through the end of this month, and it's going to be heard by you. It's going to be heard by the Budget Committee, and then it's going to be voted by the town. So there absolutely is a checks and balance system in this going through the process of hiring. I appreciate your support on the board. I appreciate all of your volunteer work. In my quick research that I did today, the five of you have approximately 150 years living in Foxborough. 150 years. My guess is none of you are moving. So to the best of my knowledge, you absolutely want to do the right thing and hire the appropriate candidate. I don't know the exact answers to the questions that I ask about Paige. I've never met Paige. I've talked to her, I think, once on the phone. I don't know her. I don't know those answers. I'm hoping you do, and if those answers are yes, they have her support, yes, she has, they have her, excuse me, she is respected, then I do believe that she is the appropriate candidate for the position. Thank you.
Can I just ask your name?
Sure.
I've got lots of emails, I don't recall.
Yeah, absolutely. It's Randall Lyons, and I'm 59 Carroll Drive, and the majority of you did respond, and I appreciate that as well.
Okay, I didn't receive anything.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joy.
Hello, my name is Jerry Love. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm grateful that my 70-year-old daughter, Jera Onwaka, almost four, and amongst four other children are alive today after the van crash at the Foxborough YMCA, OKD 67 Mechanic Street on December 26 at 4:30 p.m. A day after her happiest and most exciting Christmas Day, I was working at the YMCA lobby after I dropped my daughter at the child watch where parents can safely drop their loved ones and peacefully walk or walk out during the two hours that you can take care of yourself to recharge. As a parent, not knowing 30 minutes later, the happy scene would change into like a war zone that you would exactly see on TV or a movie. At 4:30 p.m., I was working at the YMCA lobby and heard the loudest explosion, and the whole building shook. Then I saw the smoke, and it was like a machine. Second after complete silence, I heard children scream. I looked at the kid gym, but did not see anything, and I had a gut-wrenching feeling that it was a gas explosion or something. I ran into a child watch where I dropped my daughter off, and I saw a huge van crash into a child watch over a coloring table where later I found out my daughter and other children, including five-years-old and six-years-old, were coloring. My daughter was at the sliding door, reaching out for help, calling mommy bleeding out. I grabbed my daughter, and I left my phone in the lobby, so I asked for help. Please call 911. In the meantime, I saw three kids shaking like a magnitude 7 earthquake, and I saw the white staff grab one of the girl who was hurt bleeding from her mouth, sliced up by flying glass. I was providing paper towels and treat the bleeding children who were screaming and crying, crying for mommy. After the EMT and police arrived, they were responding, and they slid between the van and broken glass like a hero. Later, I learned that some police firefighter, they took four ambulances and four children to hospitals. My daughter was treated for 14 abrasions, and probably would say in her beautiful body, it's going to scar her for a long time, and as long as emotional or physical injury. I have written these things, but I just want to talk that my daughter was facing the van, and she was scared of headlight and parking, and then I just was, it was very lucky that she was there to protect other children, and then she told other kids to run. So my question for you is, do you think this could have been prevented if there were a safety regulation inspection and probably like maybe math equations or statistics that you learned from school if the intelligence resources and part of $90 million budget that was appropriately accordingly allocated? Do you think there is anyone in this town staff or leadership that can prevent this accident from occurring? I already heard from some people in town such as daycare or community gathering places that are located right in front of the handicap parking area, parking area. These cases unknown what happened to the van, but you know, the handicap van, handicap space, that means they could have stroke, they could have like, you know, heart attack that they could crash into easily. So my ask is that would you be able to form some committees such as Child Sex Awareness Committee and find Bill Sheehan sexual assault, that somebody made a mistake? This is a mistake, but you could prevent. So I suggest that you form a safety building inspection committee, inspect the distance between that parking space to where vulnerable populations gather and exposed such a children, and then enforce tempered glass or at least a film that can, we can all 100%ly, you know, prevent these car accidents to happen, but at least have enforcement to have tempered glass. According to the USA Department Transportation website, Traffic Safety Facts, there are so much that children had died by the car accident injured, and I'm very lucky that my kids and other kids, well, not the fatal statistic, but they are adding the injured statistics. So I cut my speech in three minutes, but I have a face in this town's leadership to do the best job to protect us from potential future harm. Thank you.
I know we're not supposed to reply, but Jerry, can I just tell you, thank you for sharing that. You didn't mean to make you cry. You're a mom, any of us, we're all parents here, and I want to say, we'll probably, we will try to look into this and see what we can do on our end, because nobody should have to see what you saw. Thank you for sharing it, though, okay? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you cry.
All right, seeing no one else for citizens input, we'll move on to, we have a public hearing, change category application for How Sushi on Central Street.
All right, because it is a public hearing, I'll read just a quick public hearing notice to get started while they're coming up. The Foxborough Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January 16, 2024, beginning at 7:10 p.m. in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application for change of category of license from an on-premises annual malt and wine restaurant license to an on-premises annual all-alcohol restaurant license for How Sushi LLC, doing business as How Sushi, 70 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass, manager Hao Zeng.
Yes, and my name's Hao Zeng. I'm the owner of the How Sushi Restaurant, and...
Can you just go up to the microphone a little bit? Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Hao Zeng, and I'm the owner of the How Sushi Restaurant, and I've been doing business here for over one year, and it's doing good, and we build a lot of regular customers, and sometimes people come in, they want to drink some like Mai Tai or some all-alcohol like vodka or something that we don't have there, so they left, and I see a lot of them, so we want to get the all-alcohol license to make them enjoy more here.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Want to explain, Katie, the license that we're going to give them?
Sure. So it's just a...
Sorry.
It's just a change from beer and wine to all alcohol, which would include spirits.
But we're using a node license instead of...
Sure, yeah.
So it's just for one of the license extra all alcohol we have in the downtown, uptown...
Uptown, yeah. So it would just be uptown-specific, and we still have three townwide all-alcohol on-premise licenses available.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Just over the last year, I wondered about violations, if there's been anything we need to know about.
No one's came in front of us with a chief with any violations to date. Are you, everybody going to be tip certified?
Yeah, we, yeah, me and the manager, yeah, we have tip certified.
Okay.
And we have experience for the bartender. Before I opened the restaurant here, and I worked at the Mean Danish Restaurant for bartender for three years, so I know how to server and alcohol.
And checking IDs?
Yeah, checking ID, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, when people come in, they drunk, I'm not serving them.
Smack.
Any other questions from the board?
So you've had a successful first year? I mean, I've heard good things.
Yeah, the first year is good, and so far, so good. Yeah, people, we get a lot of good review on Google, and a lot of customers are really nice here.
All right, good. We'd like to hear that.
Yeah.
And we always use the node specific if available before the townwide, correct? Because we haven't seen a node one in a while, so just, okay.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up. Is there a public hearing? Anyone from the public want to come up and speak?
All right, seeing none, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need our motion to approve.
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so a motion to approve the request from How Sushi LLC, doing businesses How Sushi at 70 Central Street, for a category change application for an on-premises beer and wine license to an on-premises all-alcohol license.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Great.
Congratulations. Congrats.
All right, next up on the agenda is Bob Cutler, town clerk, public mail-in voting and discussion.
And this is a public hearing, too, so I'm just going to read the public hearing notice while you're coming up to, Bob. All right, so motion to open the public hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 54, Section 25B, to opt out of mail-in early voting for the annual town election scheduled for May 6, 2024.
Second.
Hello.
Do I have to second that?
No, we should read it.
Just a public hearing.
That's not a moment. That's not a moment.
So I'm going to follow up from the women that spoke earlier about the mail-in voting for the town election. So last year was the first year that mail-in voting was allowed for municipal elections. I came in to opt out. You all agreed, and we opted out for last year, and if you recall, last year, we did not have a contested ballot. So if we had had mail-in voting, I would have been required to send out ballots to anyone that had requested a by-mail ballot during the year. Last year was an off-year cycle for elections, but this year, it's even more important. We have four elections this year. We have the presidential primary in March, the September primary, and then the November presidential election. So two years ago, when we had the election cycle, we had thousands of requests for mail-in ballots. If, for instance, for March, I'm expecting to get somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000 requests for mail-in ballots, which is a great thing. It's convenient for people. However, what it creates for the town election, where we typically get anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 people participate, I'll be required to send out 3,000 to 4,000 ballots to anyone that selects all elections for the year. That would be at a cost just for the mailing at approximately $3,500 to $4,000, just for the mailing. That doesn't include any time involved in processing, doesn't include the extra cost for additional ballots that we would have to order, because for the town election, I normally order around 3,000 to 4,000 ballots, but I'd have to order, you know, 8,000 to 10,000 ballots, and, you know, the more you order, the more you're going to have to pay for that. So to get to the points made by the women who spoke earlier tonight, and also the ones that you've received additional letters, I know because I've seen them, any of the points that are made in there, the absentee ballot is, that's why the absentee ballot is there. If we had the absentee as an alternative, which we did last year, you would have a directed mailing to people who actually want to vote for that election. What I'm afraid is going to happen is we're going to send out 3,000 to 4,000 ballots, and we might get 500 back based on, you know, past records for our town elections. So although I don't expect this year to be an uncontested ballot, I, you know, we haven't had a big turnout. I think we had like maybe 2,500 two years ago, to the point where one of the women said that most cities and towns have not opted out. Last year was the first year that we had to do it. So a lot of cities and towns were just trying to figure out how it was going to work for them, and it was an off-election cycle. I've talked to many of my clerk friends who are, right now, as we speak, attempting to opt out as well, because of the same reasons that I mentioned to you, the cost involved mostly. If I knew that we were going to send out 4,000 and get 4,000 back, I wouldn't be here. But we're spending a lot of money for a little return on that. I brought a copy of the application for an absentee ballot application. There is no place for them to check and list the reason why they are requesting it. So we're not asking them to lie. Essentially, since the pandemic, the reasons on here are interpreted liberally, because as we just saw the last month and a half, I don't know, but most people I know were sick the whole month. So if they weren't feeling well, didn't want to expose other people or be exposed, they can do that for medical reasons and do an absentee ballot. Any of the reasons mentioned in the letter, they can do an absentee ballot. If they're caring for an elderly parent or a child and can't get away during the day, they can do an absentee ballot. If they have work concerns, they're not going to be in town during polling hours. They can do an absentee ballot. So I would just stress, like we talked about last year, the cost to do it, especially in an election cycle year where we're going to have thousands of requests for by-mail battling, balloting for the other elections, you know, I would request that you'd opt out again. I gave you a PowerPoint that I had done today over at the Council on Aging. Try to explain some of the confusion that goes into this whole thing now that we have these postcards. When you look at the postcards, there's lots of confusion with them, because if they're an unrolled voter, they don't know that they're supposed to check which ballot to, that we should send them, that sometimes they forget to sign. It just, there's a lot of extra confusion, and the confusion and the cost, I think, are two reasons why I would actually opt out again this year.
So I have a clarification question. So the national and state part of the elections, automatically, they go out?
Yes, anything but municipal elections...
Municipal, so we're only talking about opting out just for come May?
Right.
Municipal.
We don't have any options with regard to the state... We don't have any options with regard to the state elections.
Right, that you have to send those out.
Right.
Okay, but if for the May election, it's just municipal in May, there's no overlap with any other. So you'd have to send out another batch.
Right, if there was an overlap election, we would have to do it.
Do it anyway.
And you have to use that same list from the state?
Yeah.
I guess, so Bob, so what's the process to get an absentee ballot? I did it once before, a long time ago, so
It's very simple. We have these online. We have them on our, you can get it through the Secretary of State's office, you get it through our website. People sometimes come in because they're gonna be away and they, once we have the ballots, they can actually vote here in person absentee. They just fill out this application. A lot of times they're gonna be down in Florida or they're away at college or whatever. They just fill out one of these. They actually can just send us a written letter as long as it's signed and it has a place where it needs to be mailed to. And that's acceptable. Anything in writing with their signature. So it's not a difficult process. The application is very similar to the vote by mail application except for the, you know, the reasoning behind the absentee application. And the ballot is essentially the same. You know, if we send out an early vote ballot, it's gonna say early vote absentee. It's the same ballot.
So what's the time timeframe? Like, when would you have to have the absentee, someone apply for that in order to to do an absentee ballot?
Yeah, so they can they can apply at any time now. We're expect, we would expect the ballots to be received like the second week of April. So anytime between that second week of April and the election, up to five days before the election.
I guess that's what I was looking for, how much time before the election? So so basically, you you get the application and then you guys mail out the absentee to to where they say they would like it. So even if you're in Foxborough, even if it's not technically that you're away.
Yeah.
You don't care what reason?
No.
You send it and and there's no issue with the votes not being counted or anything like that?
No, no, no. So there was also a statement where, early, I think it was Janet, said that if the ballot got in, it wouldn't be counted. That's not how it works, but the ballot doesn't have your name on it. So if it went into the bin, there's no way to find out whose ballot that was. So you wouldn't, it wouldn't be pulled out.
And there was also, I think Janet again, about the perjury aspect of signing that
They're not lying. There's there's not a box for them to check saying, I'm sick or I'm gonna be away. In their mind, whatever the reason, if they cannot be there the day of the election, for whatever reason, they're allowed to vote absentee.
Where is that on? I'm just sorry if I look like I'm looking around. I'm just trying to find that just to, because I don't think we have
You you didn't have this.
That one, that's the one that I wanna just take a look at. Do we have it?
I mean, I can give you this and you guys can look at it. But on the back, it says registered voter who will be unable to vote at the polls on election day due to absence from the voter city or town during polling hours.
No.
That's what it says right here. It says absentee. If you're absent during polling hours, for whatever reason, it doesn't say because you're taking care of someone or you know, you're working, if you're absent, you can't make it to the polls during polling hours. Or disability or religious reasons. So disability could be a medical thing. Once the pandemic hit, that changed the whole description of that process. In fact, two years ago, when this law was not back in effect, we had a town election. We had someone show, call, they had COVID. If it's within the five days before the election, if they're admitted to a healthcare facility, they're allowed to vote absentee, even though it's beyond the timeframe. We had someone who had COVID. The state had not repassed this law and they weren't supposed to be able to vote. They were gonna be out of luck. That was our initial indication to them. They called the state and the state at first said, no, you can't let them vote. And then the state calls back and said, they're gonna make a big to-do about this. You probably shouldn't let them vote. So they came up here, parked over there in the handicap spot. One of our staff went out, gave them paperwork, they filled it out and they were allowed to vote. We're not, we don't try to prevent people from voting. We try to encourage people from voting. So I'm gonna err on the side of caution and give them the right to vote. So.
Probably best practice would be if you if you apply for one, you should at least get it mailed back. You shouldn't get yourself in that five day. You 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 have your absentee ballot in pretty, you know, pretty in a good amount of time before and make your selections, whatever, you know.
Well, most, you know, most people do. And I guess some of the questions, some of the people brought up in their letters where I, you know, I care for my mom or my mom falls and they might have to take care. Well, if that if that's in your head that that's gonna be a problem and you don't think you can beat that, vote absentee.
Bob, do you have an estimate if we opt out again, how many people this could impact? It's hard to really think about this without knowing how many people. I I personally feel we're on the wrong side of the issue because we do want people to vote. You know, and it just feels like we're not on the right side of that issue. So I'm just wondering how many people are really impacted.
Well, you know, I anticipate somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000 people who are gonna request a by mail ballot for the March election. How many of those really will vote in a town election? I really can't tell you, but historically, we've been anywhere from 500 to 2,500 the last five years for elections. We had two years where they were uncontested. And we had, you know, last year that was 500 and something people. And the other, 2019, it was 600 and something people. I think 2021 was the year we had the big school committee race and we had like 2,500 people. So that's about the most we've had in in a long time. And, you know, I'd like to see 10,000 people vote, but realistically, that it doesn't, that doesn't happen in a town election.
This is a public hearing. Yeah, come on up.
I'd love to speak again. Should I sit here?
Yes. Can you state your name again?
Sure, sure. So my name's Jan Sargent Tracy. Please excuse the mask. I work with sick people and people who are actively sick now, so I wanna protect everybody in the room as much as possible. The things I talked about as far as perjury and the three criteria for a vote by mail. I spoke to the person who's the head of the Division of Elections at the Secretary of State's office, and that's essentially from him, so I assume he knows the Massachusetts laws very well. The other point I wanted to make was, yes, turnout is very low for municipal elections. Very low for mail-in ballots, but it's also very low for polling places. And yet we open up the polling place and we set up the machines and so forth. And I don't think anyone would say because municipal election turnout is low at the polling places that we shouldn't offer polling places. And it seems a bit of a double standard to say, yes, we'll have the polling place and, but we won't offer vote by mail. I also want to point out Foxborough is not a small town. We have one polling place. And that is difficult for some people to get to that. And the last point I'd like to make is I don't always know if or when I'll be asked to to work or care for a parent, my my parent, my mom. And it might happen, it might not. So I don't have a five-day window to say that I would qualify for an absentee ballot.
I just suggest in that situation, it sounds like you could always err on the side of caution, expect that you would be not able to get to the polls. And it sounds like that would be an appropriate reason to get an absentee ballot.
Sure. When I spoke to the person at the the Division of Elections with the Secretary of State, he said, actually, I do have to swear that I fall under one of those three criteria. And if I didn't swear that, that and that wasn't true, then that is perjuring myself. He also said that if voting, for some reason, the election was contested or revoting or so forth, he said, if they found out that I voted and I wasn't, I didn't qualify for one of those three criteria, that my vote would be invalidated.
Sounds like they wouldn't know which ballot was yours.
I don't know how they thought that.
I think, if I'm correct, what you just read from was the mail-in ballot. If you did the absentee ballot, am I correct?
No, I I know what she's saying, but I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying the interpretation of it. I don't know who you spoke to at the state. There is nowhere on here that you have to check a box. You sign out of pains and penalties of perjury that you are not gonna be able to get to the polls. That's all you're saying. You're not saying the reason why.
You 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 you, they give you three criteria, right?
Yep. Unable to get to the polls during the polling hours. Disability, which could be a medical issue or religious beliefs.
And really, in the whole scheme of things, number one covers
Everything.
Everything.
Yeah.
In all honesty, yeah, that you, if you know or have a feeling that you're gonna be watching your loved one during that time, that the number one criteria falls under that. You can't go to the polls.
That's my interpretation.
That I have a disability?
No, no, no. Number one is you just can't make it to the polls during the polling hours.
Due to absence from the city or town during polling hours. If you're if you're working
Because I'm because I'm absent from the town.
You can't get to the polls during the polling hours. So if you're caring for an elderly relative or a child or you are committed to being somewhere else and cannot get to the polls, that's my interpretation of the language.
Okay.
Is the language, Bob, specifically, if not, what was the language of that first one?
Absence from voter city or town during polling hours. I mean, you might be in town, but if you're caring for somebody, you can't get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted just for clarification, point out that we do have an anticipated dead exclusion override on the ballot this year. So for what that's worth, with the DPW building, so that might make turnout a little different.
Come on up. Yeah, have a seat. Thank you.
Hi, Andrew Ballantyne, 51 Sherman Street. So I wanna speak on a couple of the topics that were brought up as to why we would go forward with an opt-out. And my understanding is that this is a fiscal issue, that we're talking $4,000 to $10,000. And I don't think that it's worth saving that money. I think we need to have default mail-in voting. And if you're asking me to make a second request for an absentee ballot, you're asking me to put in time because the town doesn't wanna spend that time. Municipal elections should be just as easy for citizens as state and federal elections. Even if it is a minor item, requesting an absentee ballot when you are already requesting vote by mail is an additional roadblock. Now additionally, the fact that the criteria on the absentee ballot can be interpreted very widely to allow everyone that wants it to be able to vote, that may be the reality, but is not the perception. And the perception matters. If town people who want to vote think that they can't request an absentee ballot, I have not heard of any education or communication that we have planned. There's no committee that's going to make sure that all of our fellow townspeople know they can request an absentee ballot. And I have a feeling if you were to do so, to make sure that they know that's also gonna cost money. So I don't think it makes sense to try and save this money. We spend more on the police tasers than we do on sending out mail-in ballots.
What's the relevance of tasers to this question? I don't understand that.
So it's a question of proportion. We're talking about a very minor item in our budget. And I think we spend much more than that on other items that also do not get a full range of use. So if you're talking about 20% of the mail-in ballots actually being used, do we have other things that we buy, knowing that they might be necessary, but only 20% of the time get used?
What was your first name?
Andrew.
Andrew, I'm sorry, Andrew. I have a bad memory. So first off, I'm gonna say I am absolutely, especially with with all the arguing that's going on about where did people vote illegally, did they not? The last, you know, four to six years in general, I wanna start off with saying that I am for everybody having the opportunity to vote. There's there's no way any decision I would make for or against would be about people's right to vote. What I do wanna say is, I feel like it's easy, would you spend an extra $10,000 for the right to vote? Maybe you're gonna say yes. What you have to realize, and I'm not speaking for anybody else here, but the decision, if I if I say we should opt out, if it's gonna save the 10, the town $4,000 to $10,000, for me, I would, you know, I'm basing it on what our clerk said. He's the expert on the trends of the town. If I vote that way, it would have nothing to do with it just being easy. But that's, it's, for me, I'm very fiscally conservative. For me, if it if it doesn't tend to trend that way in the past years, I think that's like throwing money out. So I just wanna make make it clear that I'm, I, if I vote to opt out, it is about saving the town some money. It would never be about anybody not having the right to vote because that that is, that is your your right is to be able to to cast, whether it's municipal or it's state or state or, you know, federal. So so I just wanted to make sure. I I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get any emails. We're getting enough lack, you know, it would never be about that, but it is our responsibility to think about what the cost is too, because it's not just your tax money, it's everybody's tax money. So just wanna make sure that's pretty clear, you know.
I understand you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can we see that real quick?
Yes.
Unless, sorry if I missed it on here.
No, I should have included that. I did.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
While Lee is reading that over, we could have a motion to close a public hearing.
Motion, anyone else? No. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So they would have, they would, I just wanna make sure I understand the process. They would, they would send in two of these. One for all elections. And then what would they do?
Well, so if they, if they opt to do by mail voting, there are plenty of options to do that. There's the postcards that you're all gonna be getting from the Secretary of State's office in the next few days. They could send that in. If they just wanted to send in a written, a handwritten note, they can do that. We have the by mail voting applications will be online as well. You can get them at the Secretary of State's office. There's a portal you can go into and sign up that way. There's like six or seven different ways just to do the by mail voting. For the town election, if you voted to opt out, then they would have to send in that separate application, either the absentee one or a written note saying, I want an absentee ballot for the town election.
And would you be willing to do some kind of education for people to make sure that they knew what they had to do as far as what you just stated?
Yeah, I mean, I did the thing at the Council on Aging today. I would do, you know, a similar thing there and we could probably do something on cable, you know. I'm willing to do that extra work.
Did anyone else want this? Sorry, Seth.
So, Bob, just, listen, I don't know if every community would do this. I mean, we're a great community. We we try to help anybody as much as we could. So just say, for example, So just say, for example, if, if somebody, you know, they may have the same reasons why they can't go to the polls. So if they couldn't come up and get this, my parents don't use, don't have a computer, wouldn't be able to, to download it. If, say you got a phone call, says someone called and said, "Hi, listen, I'd really like an absentee ballot." Are you guys, would you guys be allowed to mail the absentee ballot out to them?
Absolutely.
So they could mail it back? I'm just trying to think of all the things.
Yeah.
My, my parents are, that's why I think I'm in the dinosaur age a little bit because my parents aren't really into that. But I want to make sure we have everything covered so nobody...
Yeah, we just need something signed by the voter so they could actually scratch it on a piece of paper, scan it and email it in. That would work. They can mail it in, they can drop it off in the box at the front of the building, they can drop it off at the office.
So if you mailed it out to them, if they called and said, "Hi, Bob, I, I can't get to town hall. I'd love an absentee ballot." You could mail it out and then they could mail it back?
Yeah.
Mail it back?
Correct.
Okay.
And are we under, like, do we, can we check with the state? Is there anything that we need to do? Or do you feel confident that we're, that we're good? And it was a while, like, kind of, he said about the state...
It gives you, it gives the board the option to do it. I mean, before last year, it wasn't an option. And the way they set it up is a little funky, but you have it unless the board opts out. And I just, like last year, I sent a note to the state saying that we opted out.
You know, I'm fiscally conservative also, but you have to prioritize even if, you know, you're fiscally conservative. And I think this is, we're in an environment where every vote is important, it's critical. We ought to be reducing barriers, we ought to be facilitating every way we can get people to vote in this environment. So I, you know, I weigh that and I think I'm against opt-out.
Dennis, did you get a chance to take a peek at this too? This is all elections, it technically, someone could just sign up for...
And we have already had people sign up for absentees for the year.
Yeah.
But if we opt-out of this, they will not get one as well? So you could check all elections? If I'm understanding this correctly?
No, because they've done an absentee, so they're...
Absentee, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So if they check absentee and they check all elections, they will get a municipal?
They're, they're separate applications, so that's the absentee application.
Okay.
No, but, but that absentee would, could be for all elections. I know what you mean.
Correct.
The, the mail-in and that one's different, but that one will cover, if you check off all...
Right.
It's all, okay.
And they would then get one for the municipal election?
Correct.
If they were unable to get to the polling location?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
All right. Sorry, I clicked around. Motion to opt-out of mail-in voting pursuant to MGL Chapter 54, Section 25B for the annual town election scheduled for May 6, 2024.
Second.
We had to wait for that one.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor of opting out?
That's a tough one.
All those against opting out? Okay, we're opting out.
Okay.
Three to two.
Thank you.
Part two.
Part two, yes. So one of the other changes to the election laws was the Select Board has to designate the fire, the police chief to staff, properly staff the elections with a police officer or more if needed. So prior to this change, last year was the first year, you had to do that, actually 2020, the fall of 2022. And last year, we didn't have the need to do that. But this year, I'm requesting that you authorize Chief Grace to properly staff the elections with police officers.
So we have a motion to approve authorizing one police officer, we're asking of this officer. Any other?
Any questions?
Okay.
I mean, there's always been a police officer there.
There's always was, and the way the law was written prior was you had to have one, but...
Now it's saying...
It's the board's obligation to authorize the police chief...
Okay, so this is new?
To staff it, yes.
Okay.
I was going to say, I don't remember this before.
We did that last year as well, so...
Motion to approve authorizing one police officer for the 2024 elections, March 5th presidential primary election, May 6th annual town election, September 3rd state primary, November 5th primary election.
Presidential slash primary.
Oh, sorry, presidential slash primary election on that November 5th one for correction.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Do you have a third section?
Do I have?
Yes. Announcement of election nomination papers available, process and dates leading up to annual election.
Yes, yes. Today was the first day the papers were available. They're going to be available until March 18th. They need to be returned by five o'clock on that day. We had, I think, five or six people took out papers today. Already a handful for the school committee and a couple of people who are currently sitting in a position. So last year, we didn't have that thing all year, so to have that the first day is very encouraging and I'm glad to see it, so.
And when I was just poking around your site, there's a, you can click the link for open seats there as well.
Yes. Yep, it's on our site, it's on the front page. Katie did a good job of getting it on the front page right away. So last year, that didn't happen till later in the process, but glad to see that that's up. And we've had a lot of interest so far, so it's a good thing.
Controversy always pulls out. Sounds good. Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, next up on the agenda, town manager goals discussions, probably just a tip-off to starting the discussion about goals. We did get a handout, nice preliminary sheet going forward. I'm going to let you talk a little bit about it.
Great, thanks, Doc. So as you mentioned, this is what I think is a conversation starter tonight. And there's two pieces here that's, that's listed on the agenda. One is discuss cadence for periodic review of town goals, town manager goals. And the second is a bigger discussion around development of strategic town-wide goals. So just the impetus behind this agenda item was thinking about where, where we want to go as a town and how we want to get there strategically, strategically speaking. And part of that is the town manager goals that we all sat together and developed and put forth as sort of our true north, I guess is, or, you know, the direction we want to go in as a town. I think five years ago, we had maybe no goals. It was a more recent development where we started to put some goals together and flesh out sort of the direction for the town, the strategic direction. And so I think that's, that's great progress. And, and just thinking about that process, it occurred to me that we put the goals together some, several months ago. And there's been a little bit less focus on them over as time has gone by. We've had a lot of stuff on our plates, of course. That's understood. Still, I feel like these goals, if they're really where we want to put our energy towards as a, as a town, as a municipality, I think they could use a little bit more of a higher profile, a little bit more attention and somewhat of a regular cadence to be thinking about what these goals are, what our progress is against them. And at the end of the day, when we look back on these goals after a year that we set them, it feels like these are, we consider them town manager goals, but I also think of them as Select Board goals because we should be supporting them and fostering the, the progress towards what we're trying to achieve. So with that, I, I had a conversation with Paige recently and was just thinking about how do we keep these top of mind? How do we track the progress against them? And ultimately, even if sometimes we have a goal that, that we've listed that we don't feel is as important, then eventually it will drop off. But otherwise, these seem to be the things that we're trying to get after as a municipality. So I'm just thinking about some kind of regular cadence, whether that's a quarterly review of a handful of goals or however, however we want to do it, but to start thinking about where we're headed strategically. So that's, that's the first piece. And then the second piece around strategic townwide goals, that's incorporates probably a longer-term view as well as a communication aspect of it. So that's where this communication director would really play a, a large part in this initiative in terms of understanding what the strategic goals are from, from the town, from, from the, from the community, really. So that's, helps us set the goals. And then once we set them, how do we measure progress? How do we keep them top of mind? How do we make sure that the community knows where they are so they understand where we're going? And if they have questions or thoughts around that, how can they impact what those goals are? So in a nutshell, that's, that's the conversation at this point.
So, so, I mean, this is certainly a good head start.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's our goals right there, right?
Right, that's a good start.
Right.
Do you want to like put them on the website and get input from the community or?
So yes, so there's, so Paige had identified in several communities that had sort of this, they started out with what their mission was as a, as a town, as a municipality, as a, as a department or, you know, a government unit, what their vision was, where they wanted to go. And then the strategic goals and initiatives were laid out of, based on how they want to get there. And they were categorized very similar to the way we are in terms of, you know, financial strength, diversity, I'm just throwing one out there, housing, those types of things. So we have, we have, we started already down that path with this framework and this goal structure. And it's just having the conversation around how do we, how do we move forward with that? How do we keep these top of mind so that if these are really the things that we, that we want to achieve, that we're actually moving, you know, moving towards achieving those goals? And then keeping it fresh so that as things, because the change is constant, so as, as things change, we continue to keep these fresh, but they're available, people understand them, they know what they are, and we're moving in the direction of achieving them, so.
So I think, any thoughts?
Well, not for tonight. You know, I've been through this kind of process many, many times, you know, setting goals. And there's always a next step. And that is after you set the goals, which are general, then what are the objectives within the goals which are specific? And you measure yourself against these specific objectives that you're trying to achieve within the goal, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the reporting.
That's it.
That's the reporting that we need to develop because that's really creates the action that we can monitor meeting to meeting. But you need the objectives within the goal, so. And this isn't a place to really do that.
Right.
You need a subcommittee or some other group to, to help get that to that next level.
I would suggest, Dennis, that some of our goals are objective-based and that they're measurable.
Yeah, there's, there's a mix in there.
There is, there is.
Right.
I think this is really important. I think the cadence that you're talking about is critical to get us to follow through and keep them fresh.
Right.
Exactly. So I think having it, you know, maybe we decide in advance what months we look at it, just so it doesn't fall off, it goes on the draft agendas. I, I think it's a great idea. And I think we dig more into the content.
Well, we could start that maybe by putting it on the website and getting feedback from, you know, maybe a little subsection on the website, you know, feedback on goals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be curious how other communities do it as well, for sure.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of communities that are way down the line in, in a process like this, like really high-level strategic multi-year. But it's like anything else that you pick up, any initiative you pick up in earnest, you just, you start somewhere and you make some progress and you continue to make progress. It's not going to be like the, the budget award where they go crazy and do it all in one year. That, I don't expect that. I mean, that's amazing that they did it. But multi-year, continue with, you know, continuous improvement and development.
Especially coming off of the interim phase that we've been in, I feel like, I feel like it's the right time, you know, soon to kick that all off again and stay on top of it.
Would you like me to ask the staff to sort of provide, because some of these things, we've done some tasks already.
Yep.
It might be good to do, as Doc said, get this out there, but in the meantime, for the next time it's spoken about, we could, I could have them fill in what's been done because some things have been, not necessarily crossed off, but progress has been made.
Sure, yeah.
So perhaps I could get an update in that regard.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Okay. When do you, when do you want to, when do you, in a cadence, sell the entire things? When would you like to follow up?
Hadn't thought that, that far into it. Honestly, I was, I thought it would be part of the discussion and that's what I would expect is...
I mean, I would think next meeting's probably too soon.
Yeah.
About a month, I'm thinking a month. So you put her on draft and see what's come back.
I think the month, like, we could have the staff fill in, you know, take this, fill it in, and then the board could decide what to do from there. Steps.
That's great, that's great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it back up.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Seth.
Sure.
All right, Acting Town Manager's update.
Well, that's me. Hold on, I have that somewhere here. Okay. So as you know, we've had some weather events of late. We had a snowstorm on the 7th, rain and wind on the 9th and 10th, and then we have today's snow. There's been, I know some concerns about power outages. We do, for those concerned about it, we, thanks to Chris Gallagher, we do have National Grid coming in on February 13th to the Select Board meeting. So for the residents that might have questions, you could always submit questions, comments, obviously attend the meeting. But that is, Chris has confirmed that February 13th, they will be in when he comes in and does his presentation.
That could be a busy meeting.
Yes, it will be.
A well-attended meeting.
Yes.
Right.
And just to note, you know, I mean, we, we have had Mother Nature, I mean, poor Dennis was without power for quite some time with that, I think it was the seventh snowstorm. The last couple snowstorms, I think over on Elm, or not snow, outages on Elm were Carr versus Polk. So I mean, there have been other mitigating factors, but certainly I know folks have a lot of questions for National Grid. The other thing I want to note is that Chief Grace commented last week how, what an amazing job DPW did to keep the roads clear after the Patriots game. As you all know, the Jets game ended and it snowed and snowed and got worse and worse. And Chris kept the crew on and kept those roads clear. And we were the positive example. There was more challenges outside of town and other towns and on the state highways, but Chris really looked ahead and kept his crew there because he knew that it was going to get rough, so.
Had to do with a lot of people on the road.
Yeah.
Most people at home trying to stay away, out of the weather and you had, well, I was going to say sixty-some thousand, but there weren't that many. I was there, not that many people there. Not that many people.
No, but it was a, it was a good effort and good foresight on Chris's behalf. Over in the Fire Department, we had a retirement. Robert, who's known as Scott McMaster, retired and he began as a call firefighter back in 1981. And I have a note here that he was one of the four original paramedics in the department and he helped build and grow the program. So congratulations to him for his retirement. We're all jealous. And so he gets to go off and enjoy his post firefighter career. In more good news, the Municipal Water Management and Conservation Project grant of $18,000 was awarded to the Foxborough Water Department. They're working with the Napontet River Watershed Association. And it's, it's for things no one wants to hear about, water conservation, water bans and whatnot, but it helps social media, rebate programs, water efficient fixtures and targeted education. Again, none of us like it, but it's part of life these days, so it will help us sort of get the information out next summer and through the upcoming year. Matt Brennan also got us another grant for 131 Moore Street. That's for, actually in the way of students from UConn. They're going to help us. And I think I've mentioned that 131 Moore Street is an issue coming up and also the dam, the dam, sorry, it is hot in here.
There's another thermometer in the back, too, Steph. There's actually two in the room.
Oh, okay. Is anybody else warm?
Oh, yeah, it's warm.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take care of it.
So we're going to have one to two students assisting us with community engagement around the 131 summit casting issue and the dam out there. around the 131 Summit Casting issue and the dam out there. So, stay tuned for that. That's, Matt took that on. MBTA Communities, you know, I came in and we spoke, met with you at the Planning Board on November 30th. The Planning Board had a meeting, and there's actually a special meeting planned for tomorrow night with the Craft Group to discuss their proposals for the MBTA Communities District. So, stay tuned for that. That will be available on Foxborough Cable and also here. And then, we've been working with the Craft Group and Mast Dot on a possible pedestrian bridge over Route 1 in support of World Cup. Congressman Akinklaas's office has been assisting us as we look for federal funds, so stay tuned for that. It's coming up quickly. Latest I've heard is it'll be eight games. So, that's going to be quite a bit, quite a lot.
Do we know over how long?
Yeah, it's like three weeks.
Okay.
So, it's in July of 2026.
And both Chiefs have said at different times, it's like having eight Super Bowls.
Yeah, it's a big deal. Because I think some of the, two of them are playoffs, so it wouldn't hurt, so, yeah. We still have the Communication Director position open. I put that on pause pending all the drama and whatnot, so I kind of didn't think it was a good idea to keep. So, we'll see where that goes. We are in the midst of the budget meetings. We've had, I think we have two or three left tomorrow. And we're attending to bring the budget to the January 30th Select Board meeting. Chris's updates for, let's see, South Street and Cedar Street, raw water main. The raw water main has progressed up South Street from 106. It is currently near 451. And it's weather-dependent, there'll be approximately two more weeks left before they encounter Mast Dot property, and we'll have to wait till the spring. So, that's about a couple more weeks. And then, over on East and Cohasset, the flashing pedestrian sign has been installed and the project is now complete. So, that's all I have.
Sweet. Thank you. Action items? Uh, no, Selectmen, Selectmen updates? Anybody have anything?
No?
Action items?
All right, we have three action items in two minutes or in one. So, motion to approve the donation of $340 for the light up the town common to the Recreation Department from Dr. Richard Michella of Foxborough Animal Hospital.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the petition for conduit location to relocate the J.O. Pole on Water Street, Pole 15, approximately 15 feet west of the current location.
Second.
Any further discussion?
There was a public hearing for that this morning at 10:00 a.m. Was there anything that came of that?
No, there was not. There was no attendance.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from December 19th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Motion to approve the January 3rd, 2024 Board of Selectmen, sorry, Select Board meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Discussion, just a real kudos to Katie for doing those minutes. Unbelievable, great job.
Here, here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, last agenda item is...
I'm going to leave.
Yeah. Town Manager Candidate Discussion and Possible Vote. Anybody need to stretch their legs for a second?
I would love 30 seconds to just walk to the ladies' room. Okay, thank you.
We'll be right back.
I was the only one.
All right, we're back. Let's start the discussion. And I'm going to start the discussion, even though it's probably going to fall on deaf ears, that certainly my intent was never to embarrass that committee. But I felt that we, as a board, have the right to add a name to the four that were given to us. And that's where we are today. Couple have dropped out, unfortunately, but we're going to continue on with discussion. Respect Bert Delaney tremendously, have no interest in resigning. And I have no right now unless there's a call from the Board not to vote tonight. So, having said that, Dennis wanted to...
Yeah. I just want to address something that's been in the papers several times, was in another paper yesterday, and was Citizens input, it came up again. I've discussed this with Jeff, so Jeff is aware of what I'm going to say. So, I never actually said that, that, you know, Paige was the designated choice for Town Manager. Never said that. It's been...
You said, I think you said designated candidate, not choice.
No, no, let me finish. What, what...
Can we just, it's really hard for us to listen, even when you're whispering to each other. It's hard for us to just focus, so just, can we have the respect from the room to just not whisper to each other during the discussion?
I went back and looked at the tape. Whenever I say designated choice, or designated candidate, or whatever, it really, my reference was, she was our designated choice for the Acting Town Manager, period. It would make no sense for me to say she was the designated choice for Town Manager. That would make no sense at all. That would be speaking on behalf of the Board. That would be taking a position we've never taken privately or publicly. And I just want that clarified for the record, because that's what I said, that's what I meant. And I'm just clarifying that for the record. Because if you don't, it just kind of keeps on going, you know, has a life of its own. So, I just want to start right there.
Let's start the discussion.
Can I just add something, just because we're on that topic? Dennis, I appreciate you clarifying it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to say this with as much respect as I can.
Here it comes.
But, but, so, I think probably, okay, so you cleared up that statement.
Mm-hmm.
But I think what also was a little, like, I almost couldn't believe that you were saying it, was you followed that up with, Bernie gave us 15 to 20 seconds, just an update introducing the candidates. Chrissener, 10 years in Cohasset, 10 years in New York, then on. The next thing you said, what was troubling to me, you said after, you didn't have any resumes in front of you. Then you proceeded to say, after hearing that, that makes Paige's resume look that much stronger. So, for me, I don't know, I don't know how we wouldn't, you know, perceive that to be what you said. So, I think maybe some of the, why people are upset, because the first remark came, then the second remark came. And I understand, you know, the first one could have been, I took it like you were calling her our designated candidate. So, I'm glad, I'm glad you're, you're, because when the two came at once.
Right.
It really, you know, and I will say, I did reach out, Christopher Senior didn't give an exact, you know, reason. I think we know why he did, but he didn't give an exact reason. Joe, I'm sorry, Tom Guarino, he specifically referenced what the Board did, referenced your comments by name. And so, I, listen, I'm not going to beat the dead horse. I, you know, I said what I said last time, but whether you agree that we have the right, I mean, it's pretty clear, we have the right to do whatever we want to do. You know, in my job, if I have a rude customer, I could take a glass of water and throw it over their head. Would I do it? Of course I wouldn't. So, I, I was very careful staying with the process because I was afraid what would come out of it. So, now I sit here tonight, I mean, I'm going to, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead, I'm going to listen to what everybody has to say, but I don't know if we're going to pick the right candidate. I don't know if, whether it's Paige, just because Paige's name has been brought up because she was the added candidate, or if it's one of the other candidates, because we lost half the pool. And the actions of the Board caused that. Whether we meant it or didn't, caused it. So, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. And I think whatever decision we make, there may be clouds over who gets the job. And so, I, you know, I appreciate you explaining, but the second comment right behind...
Well, the second comment was, was on the surface with the brief description that was given, you know, they didn't seem like a strong group. You know, when all of the focus has been on qualifications and experience, it didn't seem like a strong group, okay? Now, maybe that was impolitic, but, you know, that was just my immediate reaction to what I heard. My point being, you're forcing me...
But I think you were fighting for Paige at that point, Dennis.
No, I wasn't. Stephanie, you don't put words in my mouth.
All right.
Really, you know, the point...
Your words were there.
The point was, that I was making, is that, is that as the Select Board's designated choice for Acting Town Manager, she deserves, anyone in that situation would have deserved an interview. That's my point. That was my point then, that's my point now. Chrissener went through the process last year. I know Chrissener. I don't know what's going on down the Cape, but everybody's musical cheers with the Town Managers. So, I look at what's out there and I evaluate what's out there, you know. So, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of sides to an issue and to a discussion. So, let's just keep it where I want to leave it.
Like I said, I didn't even have Paige, none of us had Paige's resume. In front of us, we didn't get it till the next day. All I'm saying is, for Bernie to say Chrissener, I just used him because he was the first one, I think. Oh, no, he wasn't, he was out of the, anyhow, I remember his, okay? 10 years in Cohasset, 10 years in New York. That's all he said. None of us had the resumes in front of us, okay? So, you, you made an assumption that Paige's resume is stronger by that. So, I guess that's, I'm going to leave it at that. That's where I really struggled, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Doc, if I may, I just wanted to recommend an approach for the discussion, just throw it out there. You know, take the candidates in order and talk about the things, our observations, what our feelings about each candidate, their strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, whatever, one at a time. And then, once we're through with the three candidates...
And we can hash it out after?
Yeah, that was my thought.
I think that's a good idea. Everybody like that idea?
Sure.
We'll go in order of the interviews. So, first candidate, yeah.
Scott.
Yep, Scott. You want to start? We'll start there, work our way down this way, and then we'll go the other way.
Yeah, that's fine. So, my observations with Scott, I thought he seemed like a, like a quote-unquote "good guy," seemed like right off the bat. I thought, I think he could do the job here in Foxborough. He had some good examples of work that he'd done, I think, but, you know, once we pulled him out of them a little bit. So, the one that's, a couple that stuck in my head were the one with the housing, or not, it wasn't housing, well, it wasn't originally housing, was schools, that they're converting to housing. That project is ongoing. And then, the second thing that I appreciated was the commentary around the culture shift in Town Hall. So, just the attitude and the way people presented when the community was present or when they came in, and just creating a stronger culture. So, I appreciated, appreciated those two items. I also felt that I would have liked to have heard more about Abington. We heard a lot about Duxbury, which is his role prior to Town Manager. I wanted more about Abington, so I was looking for a little bit more substance about what he had done in his time as the Town Manager of Abington. So, I'll stop there.
Okay. I'm not going to, a lot of what you said is exactly what I picked up from Scott. I think, you know, I did feel like we heard the word Duxbury a little bit more than Abington. And, but, I mean, that's, that's part of his, you know, up to being that Town Manager. I did like a couple of things that, you know, that he had been a building inspector before. You know, he talked a lot about their police and fire department, info into the community, you know, which I think the communication pieces probably for most of us is, is key. You know, I was going to say something, but I think I'm going to hold that till when we're actually deliberating a little bit more. You know, he, he seemed like he'd be, could be a good fit here. I think we're all a little, you know, going to be careful with, with what, you know, what has happened in the past. We want to make sure that someone's a good fit here. He seemed friendly enough. Obviously, we all had the opportunity to look at background checks. You know, I think he got good from the people he works with, you know, the people in Town Hall like him. Seems like he's a good neighbor, which, you know, I know doesn't sound like what we need to know about being a Town Manager, but we want to make sure we get it right. If you're good with people, you're good with people. So, yeah, they took a couple, a little bit of my thunder, but so anyhow, yeah, that's what I, that's about what I have to offer.
Can I just clarify one point, Steph? Or, you said, when you said what had happened in the past, you're referring to Foxborough as opposed to Abington, or anything to do with Scott, right?
We wanted to get it right.
Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, 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 I'm sorry.
Perfect, okay. I thought so, I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's what I thought.
Oh, and one other thing, I mean, he talked a lot about the strategic plan. It was in Duxbury, too, but obviously, we're, we're very big on the strategic plan that we have. He could bring different aspects to that, maybe that we're used to. That's also about the fit. So, but he did talk a lot about, but that was also in Duxbury, so.
For me, again, a lot of what you guys already said, I thought he was a nice, great candidate, came across very nice. The only two things that I saw, he seemed like he wore a lot of hats in Abington. And that just was, you know, how will he work, you know, with department heads that are going to take care of four or five of his hats? And the other thing is, you know, obviously, Route 1 in the Craft Group, didn't see anything in his experience, you know, working with, you know, big, some big entity like that. But other than that, I thought he was a well-rounded.
Again, not going to repeat, you know, what everyone else said. I think, Seth, you really hit it on the nail on the head about, you know, talking a lot about Duxbury. And he was there for 15 years, and the only job there is Director of Municipal Services, but I got the impression that there was lots of different roles there that weren't really built out as much here that I would have liked to understand better. Like, even, I think you mentioned being like a special police officer and, and other things like that. So, and then, as far as something I liked that he said, I really liked his reference a couple of times to the public being the investors and customers. So, that was something that, that I jotted down, that I, that I really liked, that he stated as well. I liked his philosophy on that.
Good. So, let me pick what you already have said. So, I thought he interviewed well. I thought he was very personable, very well-spoken, clear, concise, made some really good points. So, I liked all that about him. He was rarely Town Manager in Abington for only, for only three and a half years, which was a bit of a surprise. So, you know, I know he was Director of Municipal Services for 15-plus years. He had various administrative responsibilities, did some really good projects, some big projects. But when you're talking about Town Manager, you know, that's, you know, that's Abington, you know, where he's been the Town Manager. The budget of Abington is 63 million, so it's quite a bit less than Foxborough. If you take education out, it's 34 million net of education. So, there's an issue of scale here that he'll be stepping into, you know, in terms of Abington versus Foxborough. The, I said he interviewed well. He seemed to have, I think somebody said, limited resources to work with, you know, whether it was HR or finance, you know, he just did not have a lot of depth of resources to work with. And, you know, that could handicap him going forward. I really thought the biggest thing for me is, you know, I keep saying that Foxborough is very, very unique. You have all of these internal responsibilities that come with the, come with the Town Manager traditional position. But then, the external responsibilities are huge, you know? And in Abington, there just isn't much going on here, you know, where you could develop those relationships, you have your own responsibilities. So, whether it's Stadium, Patriot Place, Gillette, Mass General Hospital, Brigham and Women's, Route 1. I just think this position would be a big step up in scale for him here. And he has some, some real talented subject matter experts here, you know, that he would really have to work with and, you know, show them that really, he really has what it takes in terms of what they might need from him, so.
To your point, Dennis, I, I thought that he might feel like he just landed in Disneyland, you know, Disney World, you know? Because it did seem like some of the stuff that he said, that he wished he had in Abington, you know... in Abington, you know? So I, I, I kinda thought that is, is like, he might show up here and be like, oh my God, look at the communication systems, look at, you know, all the stuff that he might not have there. And it, he may not be used to, might be hard for him to come in and now all of that's thrown at him at once, so, yeah.
All right. Any other thoughts on, all right, we're gonna start with you.
All right, so me.
With Paige, we'll go back this way.
Oh, who am I doing?
We'll do Paige next. We'll go in the same order as.
Oh, okay, 'cause I had, I had Joe, Joe Powers next. So Paige Duncan, been the acting Town Manager for seven months. I think, I think we all know her, her background. She, she's been the Foxborough Director of Land Use and Development for over eight years. She was a senior planner, project manager at Beals and Thomas for another six years. So, you know, good private sector experience. And then she was, you know, Town Planner, Assistant Town Planner in, in six, six communities for, I wanna say, another 14 years. So over 30 years' experience in municipal management, and six in the private sector. So this is where, you know, I have a disconnect, because we intentionally did the qualifications without saying they had to be Town Manager. And Paige's, you know, work has been in the area of planning. Planning, growth, economic development, you know, those have been her, her sweet spots. So when I say she has experience, I think she has experience for today's, today's Town Manager. Where we can't continue to just, you know, add dollars to the tax rate or increase fees. We have to really find these other sources of revenue, you know, so that we can really, you know, balance the expenses that are always gonna go up, just for the inflation, if nothing else, but also have these alternative revenue sources that are gonna be so, so critically needed. So I, I thought that's what, what Paige brings to the table. And I've talked to, you know, a lot of her direct reports, and they're excited. And so, you know, I have reached out to see what people are thinking, so, you know, and, and these are very professional, educated, hard-working people. And it's not like they're saying, we have everything we want, so we, we love Paige, we want her to come in as quickly as possible. They're very thoughtful about, you know, what her assets are, what areas they may need to help her in. So there's a lot of support out there, and people know if she has any perceived deficits that they may have to help her if they're perceived deficits. But the fit is there, the respect is there already. And that's a key point that I kinda wanna bring forward. Obviously, we, we have like a $93 million budget. You take out education, it's 55 million, triple bond rating. She interviewed well, and I identified her, her strengths. She does have a Bachelor of Science from Birmingham State University. She has an EMS in Community Planning from University of Rhode Island. And, you know, that's, that's my, my summary.
All right. So, you know, a couple of times Paige had mentioned, you know, I don't know at all, but the buck stops with, with her. So I think she had mentioned, you know, in addition to what Dennis had said, a lot about the collaborative approach. She made a comment about, you know, you wanna, you wanna get the job done, but, you know, enjoy who you're working with. I like how she talked about being a rule follower, and I've seen that in action. I think that she's had to tell people in town no already, and isn't afraid to do that. I liked how she talked about the Communication Director role and really giving the residents a voice. You know, obviously, on the flip side, if you were to look at her experience with the collective bargaining and the budgeting, she has less than the other folks. So I think everyone brings things to the table, all three candidates bring things to the table, positive and negative, and that, that would be hers, you know? But she's in the trenches of the budget this year. This budget will be done, will be done likely by her. And there's a good team for the collective bargaining that we have coming up in the next couple of years, so. I may have something else to add as I listen to everyone, but just my thoughts.
Okay. Yeah, I also thought she interviewed well, like all, all three candidates did. Her pluses, you know, both you guys have mentioned the collective bargaining. She has no experience there. The budget, I think, a few weeks ago, she had no experience. She's learning awful fast, especially with the thought that we want a budget here in front of us by January 31st. Steph?
I guess I'm gonna repeat a couple of things. I mean, I mean, obviously, we all know, we all know Paige, we're familiar with Paige, we all like Paige. So, you know, a couple of department heads that I spoke with, you know, they had nothing but good things to say about her. A lot of the emails that we got, you know, first of all, asking us to give her an interview. Second of all, then, you know, their support of her getting the job. I think, okay, so, so her leadership skills are great, she, she has so many great skills. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, I, I think I'm gonna share what my fears might be, because I think we're all gonna have good things to say about Paige. But a couple of department heads I talked to and seemed not to be the ones that I had any conversation with, talked about working with her and how great it is and how, how, it's very easy to work with her. Some of the people mentioned her lack of experience. Now, I think no matter who you are, when you're at a certain level with people, and then you get to be the boss, it doesn't matter who you are. That can, there can, there can be, there can be some issues there. I think the people that she works with on a daily basis as a planner don't see anything. You know, they're just gonna, they're not gonna skip a beat. Couple of people mentioned that they thought they were surprised that she was being offered the job, or even that she was offered to be acting. They didn't really know where she jumped from planner to there. Much fewer than people that, that, employees that had nothing but great things to say about her. To me, there, there's a little bit, you know, worrisome there. You know, we've, we've talked about experience. I guess, I guess for me, it wasn't, everyone kept saying she's been doing the job. She's, she's had, when, when I've had, we heard certain letters we got said, she's been, she has seven months' experience. I guess for me, I was looking for more. I didn't, I don't have anything bad to say about her. Her skills are her skills. I guess, you know, Bill Keegan came here with 20 some-odd years' experience. We had other candidates with 20 some-odd years' experience, some of them dropped out. But I guess that's what I was looking for. It, it wasn't anything that Paige was doing wrong. I, I guess I want, I, I wanted to make sure, and, and also somebody, somebody shared with me, asked if I would say it at this meeting when we were discussing it. His comment was, he wanted to know if any one, any one of us had a $93 million business, would we hire a CEO with no experience? And then he followed that up with, that doesn't happen in the real world. So I just wanna make sure we're not looking at all Paige's strengths and we think that, that'll take care of the experience. So I guess that's, you know, a concern I have. All her talk about strategic, strategic planning, you know, you know, and she even said it parallels with the master plan, you know, and, and she does have experience in, you know, in that. And, you know, she gets, she does have the respect of her department heads. I, I hope she's able to, I, I know she's getting through the budget. You know, what, what a couple of letters that we got and, you know, and I think what she said, that Marie's been working with her. And the one thing I wanna get clear, I mean, I, I think everybody here knows this, but a lot of the letters are like, you know, she's getting through, she's getting through the budget, and, and they talk about how good of a finance team we have. I just wanna make sure people realize that Marie is wonderful. We have a great Finance Director. Marie does not set the budget. The Town Manager sets the budget, okay? And then, and then from there, they're gonna shift it off to AdCom, shift it off to this board. Nowhere does it say that the Finance Director is, is recommending the budget. So, and I will, listen, I know she doesn't have experience in that, so, so, you know, I'd like to give her a little bit of free pass this time around, but we, we have to know that she's the one that has to be with the department heads. And I, and from what I hear, she's, you know, and I think she said it herself. She is getting it done with Marie. So we just have to remember that Marie's about what funds are there. Marie isn't the one to decide what department heads can get. That has, that's on Paige. And I think this budget, you know, i- if she happens to get the job, I'm not gonna just, and the budget goes, we have a great budget, I'm not gonna say, well, look at, she did the budget, okay? I'm gonna be worried about next year. And, and it's okay, I mean, that's, that's collaboration too. But what I'm hearing is Marie's been helping. So the budget itself, Marie's supposed to be telling what the funds are. So I'm still a little bit iffy on her doing the, you know, the budget. I hope it comes out great. I wish her success in, in what she's doing. But those, I guess, are, and, and I guess the only thing that I would add is that I, with her, with the great skill she has, I still feel like Foxborough is not an entry-level town. I'm worried about us hiring an entry-level Town Manager, so. Lots of good things, but, and you knew I was gonna be the one to bring the what-ifs and, and what I'm, what I'm nervous about, so. On to you, Seth.
Okay, thank you. So, strong, really strong interview, concrete examples for each question. So I was, I was impressed with that, and that's just, so that's based on the interview process. Beyond that, I have experience working with Paige. And so it's, you know, the things I've observed are strong verbal communications, strong written communications. I didn't talk to all of the department heads, but there was a lot of support across, across the team. Years of municipal experience, known commodity across the area. Strong relationships, Craft Group, the like. And then just the progress against initiatives, this is maybe selfish, but, you know, the things that I've been interested in, the auditorium, the school, it's not the pain, it's the other school that we're working, moving on.
The pain.
The pain, okay, it is. What's the one right, yeah, what's the, anyway, they both start with Paige.
Oh, the Taylor? I don't know, okay.
No, it's, anyway, the, the licensing work, the goal's work that I'm thinking about. So very responsive, and so there's, and then as far as on the other side, new to budgeting and new to collective bargaining. So those are something to, to consider as well.
If I could just add one thing to what Seth said too, like, you just rattled off a number of different projects. And that's been my experience, that if you just happen to mention something in passing to Paige, it's not just mentioned in passing, it's like grabbed onto, collaborated. You know, even if it's not done, it's, it's moving forward. It's, and really, that's one of the reasons that I have worked with her in the past is, you know, there's a project, we wanna move something forward, and it, it just gets done. So that is just something important that you said that I have not had a chance to say yet. And, you know, Steph, you had said we're not an entry-level town, and, you know, we're definitely not an entry-level town. I think the biggest thing that separates us is Route One and the stadium and all that. And of all three candidates, that is the person that has the most experience in, I think, one of the biggest things that makes us not an entry-level town.
Fair enough, but wouldn't you think a lot of, a lot of the strengths are, is her being our Director of Land Use? I mean, I, I guess that's where I struggle a little bit. I, I don't have bad things to say about Paige, but everything I'm hearing is the projects, that's what she was doing before she was acting. A lot of that is, a lot of that is from her formal, former role. So, I, I mean, that's what I mean. I, I think it's all great stuff. It's all, it's all great stuff, but I, I guess when I say entry-level, I, I actually mean the things that would fall just in the Town Manager's office. And I know some of that collaborates a little bit, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just, just, I'd say it falls the whole, the whole gamut.
Okay.
So I, I left out a couple of things. Collective bargaining, it, it is a concern. She hired a HR Director with a really superb background in collective bargaining, who really helped her in that area, Paige Appolito. So she saw that gap. The other thing with collective bargaining is all of our department heads, at one point, were Presidents of the Union, you know? So she's going to the table, if it's with the Fire Department, with somebody who was the President of the Fire Department Union, Paige Appolito, Council, and Paige. So she'll learn the process, but, you know, there's a good team there in place. I'm not worried about collective bargaining, and I'm not worried about the budget, because I got news for you, Town Managers, CEOs, they don't do the budget. You know, they get the budget when it's been compiled, when it's been, you know, gone through the Department Directors, when all the issues are catalogued with the Department Directors. And inevitably, you get to the time where, you know, and it's usually five to 10 issues. There are five to 10 issues in that budget that need the Town Manager's attention. They go to the Select Board, they go to the Advisory Committee, which takes their job extremely seriously, you know, fine-tooth comb. You know, then they come back to the Select Board, then they go to a town meeting. So I'm not worried about the budget either, you know? These are things you can learn, but the structures, the systems, and the people that are in place are very high-end in terms of being able to cover these deficits, perceived deficits. You know, as she goes forward and, you know, learns and she takes courses or whatever, so I just would say that. Okay. Start with you again.
Joe.
Joe.
Sure, okay, Joe Powers. First off, I thought Joe Powers was an excellent communicator. Could articulate his points, quick on his feet, so to speak, answered questions, you know, banter, easy. So really strong communicator, which I appreciated that. And then, answered, as far as the interview, answered questions well, I think honestly. And so, so I appreciate that as well. Then the, on the other side of the coin, one concern was, land use was, was not a strength, which is, which is fine, we don't all have strengths in every area. Potentially a concern here, we have, we have a lot of activity in town, there's a lot of development in town. So that could quickly turn into a risk if we have, if we have a hole in the, in the Planning Department or the, the Land Use Department, so that's a concern. And then another thing, I, I checked with, with Council to, to see if I could even mention this, but he does live quite a ways away, hour and 20 minutes or so, so that's a little bit of a ride. And we've had issues with, with employees that live really far away and are expected to be here on a regular basis. My two cents on Joe.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just hit the commute first as well. I, I can't believe one of us didn't think to just ask him about that commute, you know? But, you know, I thought about afterwards.
Especially in the summer.
Yeah, you know, so, I, you know, that, that. Yeah, you know, so, I, you know, that, that absolutely could be a concern. And I know, um, one of the emails we got, um, a resident brought that up and, and, um, and had mentioned that we also, um, lost a building inspector for that, who said, no problem, this community, no, I'm not worried. And then within a couple of months decided it was, it wasn't, you know, no one wants to be in their car all day. So, yeah, that, that I would say could, could turn into an issue. I guess, um, I wish we had asked about it. I do know that he talked about at one point, I, I know he has, um, family in Braintree too, and he grew up in Braintree. I think he might've told us that he headed to Harwich because of his children. Now, you know, like, like I said, I mean, I, I guess I can't, can't, uh, really speculate, but I don't know why someone would want to make that commute. Maybe, I wish we had asked, because maybe he has plans on coming this back. I know it looks like his kids are, are, um, getting a little bit older, so maybe he doesn't have to be in Harwich, but, you know, shame on us for not double checking on that. I thought he was, I thought he was, um, an easy interview, easy to, um, I mean, he had us all kind of chuckling a little bit, you know? Uh, not, not by, you know, not that he was cracking jokes, but I, um, I guess a couple of words that came in my head, um, about him, um, you know, I, I, I know, you know, we, we did have a, a, a resident use the words that his, um, his interview was rehearsed and polished. And I, I was like, am I missing something? I thought it was the exact opposite. I, you know, I, I thought he was, and he was honest, it was, we asked him one of the questions, he says, you're not going to like my answer, but no. I think, I think it was the last question we asked him, how we felt about, um, it was transparency and communication and, um, customer service, uh, in Harwich. And, um, and he, you know, we're like, you know, wow. I, I think, I, was it the question about what did he, was he proud of? And he said, no, nothing, you know? And, and, and kind of, and kind of, we were, I like, he was like, I know that's not what you want to hear, but I, I found it honest. Like, he said, we're not where I want to be. So at least I know he's got a goal for that. Um, and that's, I think, maybe in, in my head, that's when the Disney World came up, I'm like, you know, he's going to come here with some really good people. And so I guess, um, I guess that, but, yeah, I mean, I, he also said that, that, um, he came in, uh, you know how I am with the money. He also said he came in with like a 2.7 budget and, um, and, and I know it's a different community and, you know, so I can't really, but I, I know he, I think he mentioned to us, as has Scott did, that they were a little bit conservative with spending. That's always a little, you know, for me, that's always a little red flag, you know, the red flag I like to see, you know? And I, I think the only thing, um, I, I don't, I didn't check with town council the way you did, but I, I, I did ask Bernie after, um, the meeting. Um, I feel like I dropped the ball a little bit. Uh, we were all made aware, there was something, um, that came up about Joe that wasn't on the background check, which is kind of bizarre to me, because we pay for those background checks and how, how something we could Google didn't show up there. But, um, I, you know, shame on me, I wasn't quite sure if it was appropriate to ask him. You know, I, I should, I think I should have ran to Bernie first instead of after, and he said, no, you could have asked. And so, um, Bernie had said to me, um, I can share a little bit with you, just so you know, and of course, I'm going to share with you guys, I mean, y- you're going by me telling you what Bernie told me. So, I mean, I, I don't know if, uh, you know, I mean, why am I going to lie about it?
Is this, is this public?
Well.
You found it on Google?
It is public.
Yeah, that's, that's filed, yeah, exactly.
I was going to bring it up because it is public.
Exactly. And you know what, I wish, I wish I had, I wish that we should, I should have just asked him, to let it come out of his own words. The one thing that Bernie said, um, because it was very hard to tell what really happened by the article, because it didn't give a lot of details. It did say that, you know, that he was put out on administrative leave, so of course, for all of us, I'm sure, it's like, okay, what happened? Um, what Bernie said was that, um, it happened in Braintree, not in Harwich, obviously. Um, he said that, I want to make sure I worded the way, what he said, they have a city council, seven member city council, not a select board. Um, he said, one of the members of the council, um, attacked his, his family verbally and he reacted to it. Um, and he also said that he openly shared that with the screening committee. So he came to us with the screening committee knowing about it. So I reached out to Bob to say, you know, can I ask a little bit about it? So basically Bob said, um, and I'm paraphrasing, um, Bob said, um, you know, he's, he's been in, in town government since he was in his early twenties. He, you know, uh, he said exactly what Bernie said, somebody verbally attacked his wife, he reacted on it. He was put out on administrative leave by the city council, who a member made the, um, the attack. And at that point, he decided to resign and move on. And he, um, he's moved on, obviously, he's had, you know, he's been, had assistant town manager, acting, acting assistant town manager, acting town manager. And, um, so obviously, he's moved on to it. It was 10 years ago, is this still something we, we, obviously, we should know? Um, I mean, for me, as long as there was an explanation that we could understand, I don't feel, I, I don't feel like I would hold that against him. If we liked him, um, I'm fine with the explanation I got. Uh, so anyhow, I mean, I wasn't sure if anybody else was going to bring that up, or if anybody else had reached out to him, but that's, that's why he was put out on administrative leave. So, and I guess the other, the only other thing is, um, uh, you know, he compares Harwich to Foxborough, they're in that 85 to 95 million dollar, um, budget. I felt like he'd be a good fit here. I thought, I thought he had a good personality. I didn't feel like, sometimes these interviews are a little stuffy, because I think they're in front of us, you know, there's that, um, you know, feeling that you're in front of people you don't know, where, you know, we're going to drill questions at you, so.
Televized.
Yeah, televised. I, I found his interview kind of refreshing, you know? I mean, like I said, so, um, yeah, you know, I, I liked him, I liked him a lot. I felt like he could be a good fit here. I think he's got, um, some experience that would help him here, of course, with good, anyone that comes here, I think, obviously Paige has the connection already, but I think anyone that were to come here, if we thought they were qualified, um, I think we have good department heads that would take, even take someone new under their wing, if they're willing to, to, um, fit in here, not that they have to, you know, change everything they've been doing. So, yeah, I, I like, I like Joe. I, I think, I think, um, I think, I'm going to go out on a line, I, I, I think Joe might have, might be my recommendation. I probably shouldn't say that until I hear the rest, but anyhow, you know? I have the floor, so I figured I'd say it, but anyhow, okay.
Uh, yeah, Kent, um, I, I seem to think I do remember reading that in the background check, um, Steph. I, I'm pretty sure I did, but obviously, we read a lot of background checks that day, so, but aside.
I think, um, the email we got said it wasn't in the background check. That's all, and that's why I said that.
I think it said, don't talk about it.
Yeah. What did it say?
I think it said, don't talk about it, or anything, that, don't reference the background checks at all.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So we'll forget about that all the other. Can't disagree with anything you two have already said. I thought he interviewed great, thought he was, um, very outgoing. Um, my own, my big concern, you know, was, was the free cash question. One of you two or both of you guys asked him. I thought he, he went around it a little bit. I, I don't know if he really gave us a, a good answer on that. So it made me feel, um, not, maybe him not having as strong a budget, um, background also. But, um, that was really the only red flag I saw, um, was him trying to talk around that free cash a little bit. Yeah?
Um, I agree with you guys, I think he was, he was a great interviewer. I think all three of them, like, you know, we've all probably sat through interviews that you can't wait, you know, to be over, and all three of them were, you know, engaging and, and, and were, were great interviews. I do feel like Harwich has a little bit more to do, like, hearing about an expired housing production plan from 2016, like, stuff just seemed a little stale to me, even though I went to their own town page and clicked on their Facebook page, because you know, like, citizen engagement is really important to me. And their own website page for Harwich main page links to a Facebook, like, I don't even, I couldn't even find a Facebook page for them. So I, I just feel like if the town's a little bit behind in keeping up with things, a little bit behind in technology, um, you know, doesn't have some of the NBTA stuff that we're, that we're focused with, um, you know, but I think that Joe was, was really honest, that like tech, that they're behind in technology and, you know, the housing production plan was in 2016. So it just, it seemed like there was still a lot to do there and, you know, he's been there for a little bit and I'm sure it was tough. He said he had to deal with some turnover in finance and everything, but for being there, you know, for, for 36 months, um, there was, there wasn't, I, I didn't feel like, there was a lot in process, but I feel like there hadn't been stuff really, really accomplished that I would hope to see in that amount of time yet. So, um, you know, that, that's kind of my assessment. I just don't think Harwich is in the same place and, you know, no disrespect to Harwich, totally different community in the summer and the winter, a lot of different priorities, a lot of great talk about, you know, the wastewater stabilization seems to be like a really big thing, a big focus, but that's just, fortunately, thank God, you know, not, not a focus here. I was surprised that they, they don't have, you know, even annual reviews, you know, just, just with direct. So I still just think that there was a lot to do there and maybe exposure hadn't, hadn't come yet.
Yeah, so, um, some kind of similarities with, with Scott in terms of overall concerns. Town administrator at, at Harwich, as best I could determine, three and a half years, assistant town manager, one, one and a half years. At Wellfleet, he was assistant town manager, but, but also town clerk. Then in Braintree, for five years, he was, uh, town clerk registrar. Uh, the, the Harwich budget is 79 million, um, 31 million education, so 48 million net population, uh, is 13,500 higher in the summer, obviously interviewed well, triple A bond rating, strong in procurement and finance. But again, it's, you know, the limited external responsibilities, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, stepping up from Harwich to, um, Foxborough. And again, we, you know, the, the whole question of, uh, where's he going to live? You know? I mean, that's like, that could be, you know, quite an issue if he's going to commute. So it just needs to be clarified. I for one know, I did read the stuff as much as I could that went on in Braintree and I'm, you can't, you know, character assassinate anybody just by what's in the press, you know? But I would want that, you know, totally pinned down and clarified, uh, in order for me to really, you know, go through to a, a vote in the contract. I think there were enough questions raised there that I would want that satisfied, in fairness, in fairness to him too, if that's still out there.
All right. Good conversation, I think I'll, um, anybody have any thoughts going forward?
I think last time we did like a straw poll, I don't know if we want to go right to a vote, I'll leave that up to you to, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, people, I mean, I think there's some support for Paige, but I'd be interested in hearing, um, support for any other candidates, uh, before we do a straw poll. So it sounds like Stephanie.
I already, I already basically.
Senator?
Well, well, I mean, I mean, I was going to say I tip my hat already. Um, yeah, I, I guess, you know, listening to what everybody else had to say, um, I, I think any of these people, we might have some, some, um, concerns, you know, or I had, you know, obviously, we know, I'm not going to repeat them, you know my concerns about Paige. Um, listening to what somebody else's concerns are, obviously with, with Joe, um, you know, is, I, you know, I wish I had asked him that, you know, or any of us had thought, you know? I mean, Harwich is a long way, ways. So, um, yeah, I, I wish, um, I wish we'd been able to, to kind of get a feel if that's going to be an issue or not, or, you know, is he going to be here for six months or a year and say, oh my God, I didn't realize what this, you know, how much time I was going to spend in the car and, you know, and then, and then we're starting all over again. So, yeah, that is a concern. I, I wish we could have narrowed that down a little bit.
Can I ask you one question, Stephanie?
Sure.
Separating, um, if you, it's hard to do, I understand. Separating the, the issues that we have with the process, totally understand that. Um, separating the process and the candidates to the, to the best of our ability. Does that make a difference in how you think about the candidates? Is the pro, or does the process drive to most of your decision? You know what I mean?
Yeah. I, I, I think it's hard for me to get away from what happened with the process, if I were to be honest.
Okay.
I think it is hard. Um, you know, I, you know, listen, we all took a lot of flak the last, last couple of weeks. I mean, I, I know people here like Paige, I know they do. I like Paige, okay?
Sure.
But I, I just felt the support she was, the support she was getting was from all people who have worked with her in her form of position. You know, it was, it, every, every email we got, other than, I think there was two ladies that, uh, I think they might've been here when she was interviewing, one of them, one of them talked about, um, uh, the senior center or something about Paige, she had seen Paige at the senior center, and one of them lives in my community. I don't, I don't know if everybody, Millie, I don't know if everybody get that, it came direct, some people sent directly.
Yeah, some people went direct.
Directly to us, so I'm not sure. But I felt like a lot of, yeah, a lot of the support were, it was all planning board, zoning board of appeals, economic development. Um, and with that being said, a lot of the other things were, um, not so much, the other emails, not support, were more about the process. They, they weren't really directed at Paige. And, and I do want to say that this imploding, a lot of this, Paige's name just is, is way too much. And, you know, it, it's not really fair to her, what happened, you know? And, um, I think we've already decided that, you know, we're, we're taking, you know, blame or ownership of that. You know, her, her name, um, was used way too much than it needed to do, than it needed to. So, yeah, it's hard for me to separate, well, because here's the thing, I, I guess, for me, it's the experience, you know, so I can't, I can't, honestly, because we didn't see everybody, it's even a little bit hard for me to, I know some people said, well, maybe we should scrap the whole thing and start again. Listen, I thought about it, I'm like, oh my God, how did we do that? But it was an option, you know, I, I think, I think we lost half the candidates. Uh, I don't know whether it would have made a difference or not.
I doubt, I don't think so.
But we lost half the candidates. So, um, I'm not really comfortable with making a, making a pick, but I, I know I have to, so.
If I could clarify, so I said, I just, you just mentioned the other candidates, I said, I don't think so. To clarify what I mean by that.
Yeah.
One of, one of the other candidates lives close to two and a half hours away.
Yeah.
Um, and the other, we interviewed last year, so we have a very good sense of what that candidate was about.
Yeah.
Um, so that's all I meant by that.
Yeah. I think I just would have given him the benefit of the doubt to be in front of us.
And I think if I'm not wrong, if I'm not mistaken, if I remember from one of the, like, there was even someone that dropped out before the screening committee, I thought I had read that somewhere.
Oh, the screening committee told somebody.
So like, dropouts do happen.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And I think even when we went through this before, Bernie had said, make sure you pick, you know, four to five people, because.
Yeah.
People drop out, so, um, you know, while it may have had an impact on it, you know, it, it does, it certainly does happen.
Yeah.
One more, one other comment, that as far as post-interview, um, the emails, um, and the, the, most of the feedback that I got, and my personal email or my instant message or whatnot, um, there was smatterings of support for other candidates, ones matter maybe, um, and then, uh, the support for Paige Duncan was, it was probably 10 notes, emails that I got, and I recognized some of the names as civic leaders and then other names, um, I'm not sure, I knew Millie from, until, until I got a note from her.
Yeah.
Um, but they, and, and so, as far as the support for Paige, some of it was qualified. But they, and, and so, as far as the support for Paige, some of it was qualified, meaning if, as a select board member, you feel that she has the leadership ability, if you feel that she has this criteria, that criteria, then she, I feel like she's, the citizen was saying, "I feel like that's the right pick." Other support was absolute, that they, they know Paige, they work with Paige, and they feel like she's the right person for the job.
I think one of them we got before the interviews even took place, said that she was the only candidate that we should pick, and we hadn't even interviewed anybody.
Oh, yeah, but those came in fast and furious before the, before the interviews.
Yeah.
So again, I'm separating the process from the candidates, as best as, as I can.
But I think, you know, after the interviews, at least some emails came to the whole board, some just came to me. I, I, I would not categorize that the notes that we received were only from people that had worked with her in her former capacity, for, for the notes that I received.
For me, it was, for, like I said, different people reach out, for me, it was all, other than, other than Millie and, and the other, the other woman, you know, everybody else that I saw, it was all zoning, planning, economic development.
Apologies to Millie if you wanted to stay...
Yeah, yeah.
No last names.
So, yeah, and you know what, every, everybody else is going to, you know, I mean, get, hear from people too, you know, some people weren't going to reach out to all of us. I can only speak for what I got.
So, let's do a straw poll. Make the motion?
Straw poll can just be, doesn't necessarily need to motion, right?
Yeah, I think that's the whole point of the straw polls, it's not an emotion.
Yeah. All right.
You looking at me, or are you looking at Dennis?
Dennis is coughing, so I'm looking at you.
I support Paige.
We going right down line?
Yeah.
I'm going to support Joe.
I'm going to support Paige.
I have done a lot of research and weighed a lot of info, and I support Paige.
Paige. Okay, so, let's make it official.
Do we want to take a motion? Any further discussion, or, okay.
No.
All right, so, motion to appoint Paige Duncan as the town manager, subject to a negotiated contract, and to appoint the select board chair and the town labor council to begin negotiations with the selected town manager. Sorry, I got distracted by your coughing. You're okay.
I second.
Exhausted, man.
Any further discussion?
No, just, you know, just, been on the board for six years, I've lived in this town nearly my whole life, and with a lot of information, I'm making, you know, the decision that I think is truly best for the, for this town.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Move to adjourn?
All right, motion to adjourn. Thank you for everyone for coming.